Okay. Going to go ahead and get started with the meeting tonight. So I wanted to just do a quick little hello to everybody. Really thankful that you are all here. Tonight, we're going to be doing primarily the public meeting hearing itself for the draft renewable operating permit for Lance Ward and Electric Company. We'll talk a little bit more about how the evening is going to go today, but the first thing I want to just do is introduce the couple of air quality division staff folks that I have with me tonight. So first of all, I'm Jennifer Dixon and me moderating tonight, and I'm also going to be the hearing officer when we get to the hearing portion of the evening. I wanted to introduce to you Chris Etheridge. He is the decision maker and he is our air quality field operations supervisor. He's going to talk to you guys in just a minute, but I also want to introduce to you Ed Lancaster, and he is our district supervisor up in the UP district office. So he's calling from his house up there and Chris is calling from the east side of the state over there. And I'm actually phoning in from Lowell, Michigan. People don't often know where that is. Some people say Lowell rhymes with Howell. Some people say Lowell, but we call it Lowell down here in LP. And I also have my boss Jim Ostrowski on the line tonight. He's going to be helping me in the background and he is giving a call in from Lansing today. So we're kind of all over the state tonight, but we're going to be coming together to talk to you about this proposed renewable operating permit. So before we get started on the rest of the evening, I'm just going to kind of run you through what we're going to be talking about. Like I said, Chris is going to talk to you guys really briefly in just a moment. We're going to do kind of a little, a short mini overview of why we're here tonight, a little bit about the air quality division for folks who haven't maybe missed the last meeting or haven't kind of heard for a while or aren't really familiar with air quality division in general. Talking to you a little bit about the ROP not as in depth as we did at the last meeting. Then we'll get to the public hearing. So in that section, just to remind you, and I'll, you'll hear me repeat this on several occasions, probably during the public hearing portion, we'll be taking your comments for the record, but we won't be responding to them. So we won't be doing a question and answer tonight. But I will tell you about some ways, some other ways you can either submit an official comment for the record if you aren't comfortable doing it tonight or you're not quite ready. And also to get some more questions asked and answered if you would like to do that. So we'll talk about where to find other information and like I said, who you can contact with other questions. So Chris, I'm going to hand the floor over to you for a minute. I know you wanted to welcome everybody to the meeting tonight. But don't forget to unmute yourself so we can hear you talking.
Can you hear me now?
I sure can.
All right. Still getting used to this zoom. So thanks, Jennifer, and good evening, everyone. As Jennifer said, my name is Chris Etheridge. I'm the Field Operations Manager for the Air Quality Division. And I just wanted to take a moment to personally thank all of you for taking time out of your evening to participate in this public hearing. Public participation is very important to us and a vital way to work towards Eagle's mission of protecting public health and the environment. Public participation also creates avenues for conversation as well as a discussion on the proposed renewable operating permit at the Lance Ward and Power Plant. The proposed permit is written with the public and the environment in mind. A reminder that the public comment period has been extended to November 4th to allow the community additional time to review all documents related to this renewable operating permit. We also appreciate your flexibility in participating with us virtually. We understand the situation folks are living in right now is challenging and that those challenges vary from person to person and family to family. We know this method of public participation is not perfect and we welcome your thoughts as we continue to look for ways to improve our outreach. I will be listening in tonight, so my decision on the proposed permit keeps you, your comments and your concerns in mind. And I did also want to mention that we've had some recent conversations with EPA and the Lance Public Library on a pilot project to house several particulate air monitors at the library that would be available to be loaned out to anyone in the community wishing to use one. This is an exciting opportunity and we give anyone in the community the opportunity to conduct their own air monitoring for particulate. So more to come on that as we move forward with that process. So thank you again for joining us and I'll turn it back over to Jennifer.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Chris. I know I'm really excited about those air monitors. I think that's pretty cool. We don't hear about those kind of opportunities very often, so we're really thankful that Lance is being considered as one of the communities where these may be housed. Like Chris said, we'll definitely provide more information for folks about that as we get it. And I'm sure our partnership and EPA's partnership with the library will garner some interest hopefully from the community as well. I was looking at our participant list and I do see that we have a lot of folks calling in tonight, so that's awesome. I know sometimes when you call in, you're not necessarily also looking at things on the screen. So I'm just want to make sure that I'm being conscientious about that. I'll talk to you guys on the phone and on, on the computer how you can raise your hand to make comments. But I also did want to say if you are listening in on the phone and you would like to get updates via email and we don't have your email address already. I'll give you some contact information towards the end of the evening regarding who you can call or who you can email if you would like to get on that list. So you might just want to have a pen and a piece of paper to jot that down. All right. So that being said, we'll get some of this housekeeping stuff out of the way. So your lines are all going to be muted tonight and we are recording this meeting. We did record the previous meeting that took place at the end of September and that is posted online. We'll tell you where you can find that later on if you'd like to view that as well, in case you missed it and you want to see the question and answer portion. All right. So just a quick little kind of overview of what air quality division does. I mean, I know we are primary purpose tonight is to talk about the renewable operating permit that's being proposed for Lance Warden and to take your comments on the record, but we just want to a little bit go over what air quality does kind of, you know, what are, what are we doing here tonight and what, what brought us together? So the air quality division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to protect human health and the environment. That's the key to our mission. So air pollutants come from a lot of different things. They can come from big farms, traffic, and then also industrial sources like Lance. So some of the major things that air quality does at a very high level is we monitor levels of air pollutants. So we have monitors all across the state and called a network, a network of monitors, which is all those monitors kind of jumbled together that monitor for different kinds of air pollutants. So each monitor kind of has a different set of pollutants that it looks at. We also examine air toxic contaminants to ensure that public health is protected. So that comes into play with a lot of our permitting actions as well. We have staff like Ed's employees, Joe Scanlon is the inspector for Lance and we conduct inspections of industrial sources of pollutants to see what their compliance is with our air quality rules and regulations as well as any permits that they may have. And they also respond to complaints. So if you have complaints about Lance ever, Joe would probably be the one that would be responding to that. And this brings us to kind of why we're here tonight. We do a lot of review of permit applications, whether they be renewable operating permits or permits to install for new sources and our staff write permits to meet rules and regulations. So we're here tonight to talk about Lance and we're here to take your public comments on the record. So we have the authority to regulate these and permit these industrial sources. And like Chris said, public participation is a huge part of our permitting process. It seems more and more lately, which we love. And but just a couple of things to put out there at the beginning of the night tonight is that we don't really have any authority over things like zoning, noise or traffic or even whether there is widespread desire for this permit to be issued or desire for it not to be issued. So just kind of putting that out there, we definitely look at things that are of a technical nature related to the proposed permits. So like I said, we are here to talk about Lance tonight and we had previously held an informational session about the draft ROP for Lance. So like I said previously, if you missed that and you aren't ready to make a comment tonight, it might be a good thing for you to review. Not that you want to sit for another hour and watch us talk, but it might be something that is helpful. And that has been posted, it's on YouTube. So if you go to our YouTube channel, Michigan, it's not Michigan.gov, it's YouTube. And then just search for Eagle, E-G-L-E. You'll find right at the top of the page, it says air quality, public comment or hearings. And you can click on that and you'll be able to find Lance or you can just search for Lance on there. We also posted a link to it on the ROP public notice page. So, and I can tell you where to get, how to get to that in a minute here. All right. So what is a renewable operating permit? I mean, I think that's kind of key to things. I know a lot of folks up in Lance, you guys have a very involved community, which is really great. And probably many of you already know what a renewable operating permit is or maybe why we're here. But I just want to take a minute for folks that might not be as familiar with what it is and kind of how we look at these. So what a renewable operating permit does is it consolidates all the kind of smaller permits, I'll say, or the permits to install and all the state and federal air quality regulations into one permit. It's, it's sort of easier for the company. It's easier for our staff to establish what the compliance is. And unlike a normal permit, one of those smaller permits that's issued only one time and stays with the equipment through the longevity of that equipment unless it's modified or reconstructed. Renewable operating permit is actually renewed every five years. So the permit, the permittee has to apply for a new renewable operating permit. Every five years, our staff go kind of through this process that we're doing tonight to look at all of those different requirements in the permit and ensure that the facility is still in compliance, that there's nothing new that they need to comply with, that there's not anything else that needs to be put in there. So as a little caveat to that, there are times, especially with more complicated renewable operating permits where longer than five years goes by before that permit is actually renewed. That doesn't mean that the old permit is voided automatically. It just, as long as the permit, the permittee, as long as Lance, in this case, gets their application in in a timely manner, then that time period can be extended and that old permit can kind of go forward a little bit while we're kind of catching up to what we need to do next. So who needs an ROP? That's another good question that folks ask. And the easy answer to this is major sources of emissions have to get an ROP. So what do I mean by major sources? These are going to be facilities that emit over a certain amount of air pollutants. And that just means that they are under more scrutiny. They have more conditions. They have more requirements. They're inspected more frequently. They have a higher level of record keeping that they have to do and they also pay fees. So it's just a, it's a more complicated source typically, and they typically have more air pollutants that they are going to be emitting than some of our smaller, minor sources, we call them. So now that we've kind of talked about what an ROP is and why Lance needs one, just kind of to talk a little bit about what's going to happen after the hearing tonight. So like Chris had said, and we'll reiterate this again as well in a minute. But the public comment period has been extended to November 4th. We got a request for that and we were happy to be able to extend that for a little bit. We had extended it once already and then we're kind of extending it another couple of weeks so that folks have plenty of time to review all the documentation and make a comment that they feel comfortable with. So what we'll do after the comment period closes is we'll review all the written and verbal comments. So you have Chris and Ed both listening in. I know I have a couple of other staff people that are just listening in as attendees to kind of hear, you know, what are people's concerns? What are the comments coming in? So that when we do that review, we do a thorough job and we make sure we take everything into consideration. The second part of that is looking at the ROP and saying, okay, does anything need to be changed? Are there changes needed for testing or record keeping, monitoring and reporting requirements? Those are things that typically can get changed through the comment process. If there are changes that are needed, we'll make those changes. We respond to all the comments in writing. So anyone who makes a comment will get directly notified of what that comment meant. And if it invoked a change, we'll also post that online. So even if you didn't make a comment, it'll be available to you. And we typically do also send that documentation out after the permit decision has been made. So folks know what happened and if their comment was taken and made a change or just how the permit action actually ended up going. So as we talk a little bit about our timeline for this, like we said earlier, and I told you I had to reiterate this and I'm going to say it again. The public comment period will end at midnight on November 4th. So if you have comments that you want to get in on the record, please make sure you do so by that date. And I'll talk to you a little bit about how else you can do it if you are not going to be planning on doing it tonight. So after that is done, we do give EPA, this is a requirement, a 45 day review of the proposed renewable operating permit. So EPA takes it. They have a chance to look at it, do their own review, make their own comments, which may evoke more changes by us to that proposed ROP. Then we would finally issue the renewable operating permit and then we'll notify interested parties to what happened with all of that. Okay. So let's get to how you can make a comment if you would like to do so tonight. The first thing you want to do is if you don't want to verbalize your comment, which is completely fine if you don't, we don't make people do that. We don't make you take the mic. So if you would like to just write your comment in, I'm happy to read that aloud for you unless you say do not read. And I'll, I'll reiterate this in a little bit as well, but you can just write that comment right into the question and answer box at the bottom of your screen. Obviously, if you're calling in, you won't have one of those. So if you would like to verbalize a comment, if you are on the computer, you're just going to click that little hand icon on the bottom of your screen and that will raise your hand for me to be able to see on this end. Or if you're on the phone, you're going to want to just type star nine into your phone. So here's a little tip. If you're calling in on the phone and you want to make a verbal comment and you raise your hand by doing star nine, I'm going to call you by the last four digits of your phone number because I can't see your name, obviously. So just make sure you know what those are. I know I have five, six, seven different phone lines on my phone bill. And sometimes I forget which one's mine, which one's my kids', which one's my mom's, all that stuff. So just make sure you know what your last four digits are. So when I call on you to make your comment, you'll be able to do that. All right. So that all being said, we're going to go right into the hearing portion of tonight. So as a reminder, we love to take your comments, but we won't be responding to them. You will get three minutes to make a comment and I'll try to give you kind of a 30 second warning so that you can pull your thoughts together. As a reminder, Chris Etheridge, our air quality division field operations supervisor is the decision maker and he is going to be listening in and taking copious notes, I'm sure, for tonight. I'm going to be your hearings officer and that means I have to read to you a kind of dry statement that lays the ground rules of the hearing. So I just wanted to put that out there really quickly. So you guys know, but as I kind of lean over here to my other computer and read this out loud because I couldn't get my printer to work, you won't think that I'm not looking at you, but I'm just reading the statement. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and get started with this. And here we go. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I am with the Environmental Support Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I will be serving as the hearings officer for this public hearing on a renewable operating permit for Lance Ward and Electric Company here and after Lance located in Lance, Michigan. Chris Etheridge, Field Operations Supervisor for the Air Quality Division is a decision maker for this renewable operating permit and is listening in on the hearing tonight. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse effect impacts on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. We are here tonight because Lance is requesting to renew their renewable operating permit or ROP. Larger emitters of air pollutants called major stationary resources are required to obtain and operated, operate in compliance with an ROP pursuant to Title V of the Federal Clean Air Act of 1990 and part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act 1994, Public Act 451 as amended. The ROP is intended to simplify and clarify a facility's applicable requirements and compliance with them by including all state and federal air quality requirements into one document. In order to renew this permit, the department must approve the permit. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the ROP an opportunity to provide information the department may use in deciding whether to approve the permit or if there are additional issues to consider. Please note the proposed ROP is still in draft form. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead, it reflects the initial technical review of the renewable, renewal application. We hope having the details of the draft ROP available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft ROP remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be granted at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria the department must use in making its decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within the department's authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed changes. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed changes. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will become part of the information the department will consider in making its decision. The public comment period for the draft ROP began September 21, 2020 and will end at midnight on November 4, 2020. Additional information may be submitted tonight or at any time until the end of the comment period via US mail or email. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point final decisions will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit, approved as drafted or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including anyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decisions. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decisions and if applicable, they approved ROP. As stated previously, you may submit a written comment at any time to the email address or mailing address provided. You may also type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment. I will read aloud all comments you submit via the question box unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I will unmute your line so you may speak. We will limit your comment time to three minutes. If you are speaking, I will let you know when you have about 30 seconds left. I'll do my best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised, but please bear with us as the technology has challenges with that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the draft ROP and to listen to those comments. Thank you so much for your attention. I will begin calling the names or phone numbers of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. Okay. Okay. So we have one comment that's been written in. And just as a reminder, if you're on the phone and you'd like to make a comment, you just are going to push star nine on your phone. So the comment says, if the fuel aggregate facility or fuel yard is included in the renewable operating permit, then we would like to see the July 2013 storm water pollution prevention plan to also be included or at least be addressed in the ROP. Thank you so much for your comment, Ms. Greer. So I'm just checking to see if I have any hands raised. I know Mr. Loman, you had indicated when you registered for the hearing that you would like to make a comment. If you'd still like to make a comment, if you want to go ahead and raise your hand, you can go ahead and do that and I will call on you. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Loman, I'm going ahead and unmuting you. So you should be able to talk whenever you're ready. Just unmute yourself and you should be ready to go.
Thank you. How do you hear me?
Yes, we can. You sound wonderful.
Mr. Etheridge, my name is Jeffrey Loman and I live on the Lance Indian Reservation. I'm a member of the Kuna Bay Indian Community. And I would like you to consider, first of all, the fact that this is an operation, this permittee is an operation that exists for one reason. And that's because the state of Michigan has renewable energy mandates. That in this particular case, DTE has taken advantage of by entering into a contract with this operator and pays an exorbitant amount of money in order to add 16 megawatts of power. That's the contract to their renewable energy portfolio. And the purpose of these renewable energy mandates is to reduce our use of fossil fuels. So biomass is considered to be a eligible renewable energy. And in this case, what do we have? We have a number of fuels and these fuels are first processed many times in non-attainment areas, chip tires, wood chips, manufactured fuel pellets are all processed many times in non-attainment areas. Then they are transported long distances and they're transported. All of the fuels are transported using diesel fuel. They're transported by truck or train. In the case of railroad ties, as far, they're transported from as far as far off places in, in Canada. And when they arrive at Lance Ward and Electric, they are then processed with diesel fuel. I would submit that they are using about four to five times as much diesel fuel to produce the 16 megawatts of power as you would use if you simply had a diesel electric generator that produced 16 megawatts of power. In other words, it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever in the context of reducing the use of fossil fuels. It's the antithesis of reducing the use of fossil fuels. The oil industry should be calling out and crying out for 100,000 more biomass plants like the Lance Ward and Electric because they would sell much, much more diesel fuel. But with respect to the Clean Air Act, I would submit that the general conformity rule applies here because these fuels are often produced and processed in non-attainment areas, adding to the air pollution problems in non-attainment areas. I hope that makes sense. If it doesn't, please let me know. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Loman, for your comment. We really appreciate it. I'm also going to call on Douglas Welker. Douglas, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to unmute yourself and make a comment for the record.
This may sound a little off topic at first, but bear with me and I'll relate it to the Warden Plant. Let's say I have a saltwater tropical fish tank containing fish that can't tolerate salinity greater than the average salinity of the world's oceans, 34.7 parts per million. What if I tried to determine whether the salinity limit was being exceeded in my tank by sticking a finger in the tank and then licking my finger? I know that a salty or tasty creates more salt in the water, but I can't equate taste with actual salinity. The next thing you know, my fish might be dead. But if I measured salinity in the tank at the same time I was testing how salty it tasted and did multiple trials, I could have a pretty good idea of the actual salinity of the water in my tank just by taste. This is how this relates to the Warden Plant. Measuring opacity is much like tasting the water. The particulate emissions limits on page eight of your staff report are like the salinity limits in my tank. You say in your report that in your response, in your response to EPA comment three, that there is not a direct linear relationship between opacity and particulate matter, though it can be assumed that if opacity is low, then particulate emissions are low. But how low? But how low are emissions with say 5% opacity or 15% opacity? You don't know unless you take a large number of simultaneous emissions and opacity measurements. Unless you do this at the Warden Plant, you have, you cannot justify equating opacity measurements with particulate emissions. Modeling is no substitute for actual measurements. That's it.
Thank you so much. I wanted to make sure you were finished. Thank you so much for your comment, Mr. Welker. That was the last of the hands that I have raised, at least right now. I'll give you a little bit of time here to decide if you would like to make another comment or a comment in general, I guess. And I don't have any other written comments either. Okay. All right, Lily and Woolie, if you'd like to make a comment, please go ahead whenever you're ready. You should be able to unmute yourself, Lilian.
There you go. I believe that there is a gentleman from the plant who wanted to make a comment and there's a little confusion if you're on the phone as to how you might do that.
So if you're on the phone, you're just going to want to tap star nine on your phone and that will raise your hand. Lilian, did you want to make a comment for the record?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have Mr. San Germano, I hope I said that correctly. Mr. San Germano, if you would like to make a comment for the record, please go ahead and do so. You should be good to go.
Hello, Jen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Sorry, I was on both the phone line as well as
Oh, that's okay. I know Zoom is confusing.
No, it's okay. For you guys. So, okay, good.
You're great.
Yeah, look, I wanted to take a moment to to speak. I wanted to thank everyone. First of all, hearings like this are absolutely critical to the success of a clean energy company like Lance Warden. I know this because just some background on me, I'm an officer of the company. I've been dedicated. I've dedicated my whole life to conservation. I've been in the environmental movement for over twenty years. I've personally been involved in building and delivering over three thousand megawatts of wind, solar, geothermal, biomass and other technologies in the US and many other countries candidly. I've also served as a volunteer in many large environmental organizations. You know a couple of them as both a board member and an advisor. And I'm not unique. Are my colleagues at Lance Warden, as well as our sister companies, have executives with very much the same credentials. We are committed to the environmental movement. It's a mission for us. It's something we take pretty seriously and personally. We're candidly totally honored to be part of Lance Warden. We take immense pride in what we do at Lance Warden. Taking a coal plant and converting it to renewable energy plant, notwithstanding, you know, things are never perfect, but to us, it's an American success story. You know, not only do we give high paying, good quality jobs to members of the community, on top of that, we enable sustainable forestry practices, which is something if you look at the California news, hits home and is important. We displaced by I think conservative measures, and this is stats from DOE and EPA, you know, in the ballpark of two hundred million pounds of CO2 per year that would be burned if we used coal instead, like that plant used to operate. We we take occupational hygiene very seriously. Unfortunately, that personal experience is this. My father contracted cancer from asbestos exposure in the workplace. So it's something we focus on every day. We're constantly looking to improve. We fully comply with all regulations, to my knowledge, often by a wide margin. I understand from Ed, from the Village of Lance and many other representatives that we've had no complaints, at least since the last time there's been a forum like this. If we're doing something wrong, we want to hear about it. We hold ourselves to the highest standards. We'd be mortified if if things happened otherwise because how serious we are. Renewable, sustainable infrastructure and power are critical to this country, the future of this country. I'm a little surprised by some of the information, miscommunication perhaps. You know, some of it could be by accident. We respect everyone's opinion. I'll give you one example. And a gentleman earlier mentioned diesel. This was on the previous call. Someone said we'd be better off using diesel to plant by our conservative estimates to produce the amount of power we do per year that require five to ten million gallons of diesel fuel, which we'd have to haul through Lance, through Baraga County, which obviously is a shocking statistic and, you know, sort of an outrageous thing to even consider. We're quite the opposite. We're part of the solution. I've unfortunately been to a lot of coal plants. I've been to a lot of traditional diesel plants in the US and elsewhere. They're dark, they're dirty, they're dangerous. Lance Warden is the light. Take these comments into consideration, people. Let's work together. Let's work from the facts. We're here for you. We're here with you. We have environmental challenges facing us in this country that make COVID look like it's kindergarten. It's really quite daunting. We're part of the solution. We want to be part of the solution. Let's work together to be part of that and and look towards a brighter future together. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sangramano, for your comments. Okay, I'm just checking to see if we have any other hands raised or written comments in the queue and I don't see them at the moment. Just double checking. Sometimes if I delay delay long enough, someone else might want to make a comment, but I don't want to delay delay too long. Okay. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, which means I have to read another sort of boring statement to you and then we'll get to the end part of the evening. So thank you for your comments and cooperation tonight. We appreciate your interest in the proposed renewable operating permit for Lance Ward and Electric Company and the time it took to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on November four, twenty twenty. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decisions on this ROP. Thank you again. The hearing is now closed. So what we're going to do now is get to just a couple other sort of housekeeping things. Let folks know where you can send your comments. If you didn't get a chance to comment tonight, but you have some things to think about and you want to make sure you do get a comment in for those folks on the phone, I am going to read these addresses out loud in case you want to jot them down. So you may submit written comments directly to Ed and his mailing address is Ed Lancaster. So his last name is L is in lion, A is an apple and is a Nancy, C is in cat, A is an apple, S is in Sam, T is in Tom, E is an elephant, R is in red. At the Marquette District Office, that's Eagle, E G L E, AQD or Air Quality Division. And that address directly is one five zero four West Washington Street, Marquette, Michigan, four nine eight five five. Or you can feel free to email at your comments or if you're on the phone and you just want his in your email address added to the list of people to be contacted. You can email him at Lancaster E one at Michigan dot gov. So again, his last name is L is in lion, A is an apple, C is in cat, A is an apple, S is in Sam, T is in Tom, E is an elephant and the number one at Michigan, all spelled out dot gov is in government. Here's where you can find some more information, things you might be interested in. The recording of our last meeting is posted here. You can see the public notice, the draft renewable operating permit, the staff report that one of the commenters mentioned, the renewal application and any associated plans. And you can find those by going to Michigan dot gov slash air and to click on permits and then you're going to click on renewable operating permits or ROP public notice and just make sure that you scroll down. We have a lot of ROPs out for comment right now. So you will have to scroll down to find Lance. And if for some reason you can't find this, just pop add an email. He's happy to point you in the right direction. We don't want anybody spinning their wheels and trying to find stuff. What I'm putting on the screen right now for folks who are on the the computer with us are just some other contact information for people you may be interested in asking questions for. So obviously we have Ed on there for renewable operating permits and inspections. Katie Cruz, she is our tribal liaison. You can also contact her. Julie Brunner is our ROP specialist. So she'll handle specific things about the ROP and work closely with Ed on making sure that that draft looks great. She'll also be looking at all the comments that we receive and helping us with our response to comments. Susan Kilmer is with our air monitoring units. We a lot of times get questions on air monitoring and Susan's happy to help folks with that. Brian Hughes is our toxic supervisor. So if anyone has questions on air toxic, he's also happy to answer those kinds of questions for you. So again, thank you all so much for joining us tonight. Again, as Chris said, and I will reiterate until I'm blue in the face, public participation is very, very important to the Air Quality Division and to Eagle in general. Many, many times changes are made to draft permits based on comments that we receive from the public. So we're not perfect. We know that. So we're definitely more than willing to take your comments and have folks participate in this way. So if you have any comments on how we do these meetings, as we're doing a lot of these virtually now, and we're very happy to be able to have more people join us. And also I would have to say, if I'm being completely honest, that some of our staff down in LP down here, where we're kind of a little bit weaker sauce on some things, might not be super excited about flying up to the UP in the winter time. Just putting that out there or driving, I've done it many times when my sister in law used to live up in the Keweenaw Peninsula at Christmas and it's a challenge. So I give you guys a lot of credit for living up there. Anyway, I hope you all have a wonderful evening and again, greatly appreciate the time that you spent with us tonight.